The Waterville Valley Select Board, I am Rich Reed of the Chair and here with me today is Wendy Raskinberg, Vice Chair, and Dan Bancroft, Select Board Member. So we have a quorum. Today's meeting is to discuss with Lewis Carneau and Company, the Public Relations Committee Engagement and Media Support Contract we have with them, and where we stand with it and what's to be done. And why don't I just leave it there? And Steve, did you want to, or anyone from Select Board wanted to lead it off? But I think, Steve, you had some comments you wanted to make?
Yep, happy to. So thanks, John, for joining us today. I did let the board know that, you know, we had the opportunity briefly to have a conversation about an hour or so ago. And you did precisely, I think, what Dylan and I had anticipated, and you put together a quick little presentation for us to kind of give us an idea on what steps your organization's gonna kind of take going forward over the next couple of months, what feedback you'll be looking for from the town, and kind of giving us a clear direction on a path board. And in conversation with John, Dylan and I did discuss a most recent editorial at the Wigwag that's being prepared concerning the project. And I just wanted to have some idea of, okay, you know, how does our public relations firm interact with local media organizations? You know, is there a conduit through the town office that either be Dylan and I or a project manager to kind of help disseminate information that's coming through us to you? And, you know, where you can support us in that regard? And, you know, I don't know, Dylan, if I missed anything, but with that, I think I'll turn it over to you, John, to kind of give us an idea of what you put together for us today.
Oh, we've lost you.
You're muted.
You know, how many times? Thank you, Steve. Can you hear me well now?
Perfect.
We're good. Good to see the Select Board. So yes, I'm John Simoes with Lewis Carneau and Company Communications in Concord. As you know, spent many years in Waterville Valley and know what a special community it is. Let me just start by saying that obviously my thoughts go out to you in this difficult time. I worked with Mark for many years and was honored to have him ask for our input. You know, Lewis Carneau was brought in to build public, help build public understanding and support for the wastewater treatment facility upgrade. And what I thought I'd do is just a quick run through of what we've done, and then a quick look at what we can do, and then answer your questions and get your input. Is that a fair approach?
Yeah, it works.
Yes. Well, so our mission in this was to ensure that this important project moves forward with transparency, trust, and two-way communication between town leadership and the community. So we started with strategic planning. We began with a strategic communications plan in collaboration with my partners Stacy Smith and Robin Shell. This included a kickoff planning session to identify key stakeholders, messages, and desired outcomes. We then built a timeline and outreach strategy leading up from here until the March 2026 town meeting vote. Our goal was to maintain credibility and minimize misinformation while preparing residents for upcoming decisions. So we did some community listening sessions with select town folk, taxpayers, VIPs. We conducted three confidential group interviews with opinion leaders to gauge attitudes, concerns, and get suggestions. These were organized by Mark, and I think we spoke with about a dozen people over the three sessions. These conversations were designed to listen first, not to persuade, build insight into local perceptions, find sources of information, engage levels of trust. We also worked to identify potential advocates for the project and pinpoint where misinformation might be coming from early in the process. Participants included longtime residents, business owners, condo association leaders, local stakeholders. So the outcome was we got a really better understanding about people receive town news, what they trust, and where communications gaps exist. And we took that input and put it directly into core messaging and came up with a public engagement strategy. So the tools that we then built, we developed key talking points and FAQ, which will be used on a potential future website, asking questions, you know, as people will ask why the upgrade is required by the EPA, framing it as it is, a need to have, not a nice to have. The effort the town is making to minimize costs while maintaining high environmental standards. And we're going to focus with the talking points on the importance of a long-term investment in infrastructure, water quality, and quality of environment and life. So we, to support this, designed templates and a discussion guide for Mark to use in these discussions. And we provided some training materials and some input on, you know, communications with individuals who came to the table in advance. Now, based on that, we came up with some suggestions about how to talk about the project. And we came up, which I'm happy to show you tonight, a new website to replace the previous one, because as the project has evolved, so too must evolve the website. So this is a new project-specific website, which is designed to serve as kind of the communications of record for all updates around the wastewater treatment facility, but to automate things, because I know that, you know, town management has a lot on their plate. This will help get information out quickly and directly to taxpayers and residents. And so the page that we designed, you know, comes from the best practices that we learned managing the Concord Main Street Project some 12 years ago, which was the multimillion-dollar reconstruction of downtown Concord's Main Street. The features on the site will include a clear homepage with a project overview, a timeline, a place for budget, a place to share documents and reports, an FAQ, weekly updates, visuals, maps, ability to sign up for newsletter, and to give a two-way feedback form. So if people have questions, they know where to submit them, so we can foster engagement. The site will be ADA, American with Disability Act compliant. We're mobile optimized, so it works on people's cell phones very well, which is important, and have SEO improvements for increased transparency and accessibility. So we want the site to become a trusted source for residents, you know, replacing rumor and speculation with accurate information and everything that they need to see in one place, in one click. So our next step, and I'll wrap it up here. So we will work with Steve and Dylan to provide strategic counsel and media support throughout the town meeting. You know, we can launch a new website when everybody agrees to it and it's ready. We have a photographer coming up this week to take photos for the website, because that was the one thing that was really missing, photos that were clear enough and big enough to make the website look well and work well. We're here to support public information sessions, to update residents, to add support if there are inquiries about what the project means, help with messaging, help with message training, help maintain steady communication through newsletters, social medias, construction updates, once we go from approved to construction if need be, and support the ongoing communication effort after construction begins by maintaining the site and pushing out regular communications to all townspeople. So our work is focused on listening and clarity and trust, and ensuring that the Waterville Valley community is informed, will be heard, and will be confident on the path forward. You know, this project is about more than just infrastructure. It's about protecting the valley's future and making an investment that has to be made, but one that will, I think, help the town grow over the next 50 years. So there you go. That was a very quick presentation, less than 10 minutes. I'm happy to answer any questions, or show you the website, or engage in whatever discussion you want, you might want to have in terms of input about where we want to go next and how we can support Steve and Dylan and the Select Board, and obviously all residents of Waterville Valley.
If I might, we already have keen interest across the town, because the number's been floated, if you will, of 100 million plus for this. And there's a huge back pressure against the fact that it's risen from 42 million to over 100.
Yes.
So the sooner we get something out there in a public forum that allows people to then understand why we are, you know, why that number has increased, if you will, that's going to help us. There's also been pressure that we've received from at least some individuals with respect to understanding more about the project. And so I think that puts pressure on getting a website up and running with all the little pieces that they might want to be seeing sooner than later. We will be needing to have a public hearing, and I don't, we don't have that scheduled yet. But that is something that folks are anxious to have sooner than later.
I'm sure they are.
But then, of course, the other aspect that we're dealing with is the 30% design, final design has been pushed again to November versus, I believe, when we were originally talking, it was going to be by now.
It was August at one point.
Yes, yes, it keeps slipping, which of course is another kind of hiccup that hinders having a really accurate website. So I understand waiting a bit, but if there's something preliminary, perhaps you could send us so we could look over. Maybe, I don't know if this meeting's appropriate, but something where we could look up on our own computers.
Yeah, I mean, I generally agree with what both of you have said. The two things I thought of in particular was, one, we really need to schedule this meeting.
Yes.
And that's sort of the first point, if you would, that we have to meet, and that everything we do up to that point should be in support of that meeting. So, you know, getting the website out in time, so people can have things to look at before they go to the meeting. The problem is, as Wendy said, it's a bit of a chicken egg problem, because it's difficult to populate the website with the key FAQs, because we're waiting on this, you know, 30% basis of design report. And we're running out of year. We said, we initially had promised that we would do it in the fall. Early fall has now slipped to late fall. Well, here we are, mid-October. And so I guess the first question I would have is, have we refined the date yet from Black and Beach as to when we may be getting this report?
The last date that I was informed of was, as Wendy alluded to, early November.
Okay, so that's like three weeks away?
Yeah.
Hopefully two.
Hopefully, well, two to the beginning of November, but, you know, being generous, you know, early November to me is like the first 10 days in November.
And the reason for, the only other thing I'd add to that is that we're also waiting on this information from PFM, which is, that's relatively a new development, but that's.
And that's important, too.
Yeah.
That's actually, that is maybe even more important, because I think, I was thinking of this when Dan was talking. No one, I think, in town disputes the need for a new plant. Some might think, well, why can't we retrofit or renovate the plant we have? But everybody believes that we need to do something about our current situation with regard to wastewater treatment. They all get that. I mean, there's no one here who's not for that. The one big issue, it's the one thing that we have to really concentrate on, I think. Set aside all that technical, there'll be people interested in all that technical stuff and whatnot. It's the financial part of it. And this is where PFM comes in. And I think the last we heard there was four to six weeks.
Yep. On Friday, I received an additional data request that I still need to submit. They're asking for some more financial information, so I'm hoping to get that done.
So that's mid-November, potentially. So that's early to mid-November. Perhaps mid-November is the date we work toward to have, we should be able to get these, well, let's assume, always dangerous, but we will get the report for the 30% BOD report from BMV by then, and we will have time to discuss it with them, because we have some very important, as Dylan and Steve know, I don't know if you were in the process in the past, but that's where we picked the actual plant we want to build, right? I mean, that is the key point, at least in my mind. Everything flows from there.
Yeah.
Right?
To be honest with you, though, we.
And two there.
Right, well, that too.
Technology.
Right.
That we're, we have Black and Beach move forward with.
Right.
For the 30% final design.
Right.
However, this is just my opinion on this. I'm not saying that it's the end all. The 30% final in this, to be honest with you, since we've already had them do the 30, the Level 4O PCC, is kind of irrelevant, in the sense that we already know what the cost is going to be. And Mario gave Mark and I his word that it's going to be a negligible difference, if any, from that.
That's right.
They gave us that cost.
I remember that meeting, right.
That final design being put in front of us. So in terms of costs, you know, if technical is the concern, that's one thing. But if what we're just trying to do is get the project out there, really it comes down to having the engineer be here in person, which I've already made sure that they will be here.
For that public hearing.
That's correct.
Right.
I confirm that with them. As well as having, you know, the tax rate impact be available from PFM. And then that way, you know, we have the ability to have the conversation with concerned, either taxpayer, residents, what have you, with the engineer, as well as having the financial impact of this project at long term.
Right. So, I mean, it sounds to me that we should be looking at, again, giving us a little time, having this public hearing, say, in very early December. And therefore, our website should be up sometime before that. It doesn't have to have all the answers, right? We can start populating it ahead of time with what we do know, whether it's financials or even the technical, technical stuff. So it seems to me then, the next month and a half, the critical thing is working towards putting stuff in a web, establishing a website and just starting putting stuff in it, so that by the time we hit early December in our public hearing, it's all there ahead of time, let's say, a week ahead of time for people to read and to develop whatever questions they have.
Yeah.
So timeline-wise, does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Very reasonable, I think.
December one is on Monday for context.
Okay, so maybe sometime that week?
Well, Thanksgiving will have been that week before, because it's the 27th of the year.
It's right.
Just as a heads up for delays that always come with holidays.
You know, in some senses, there's no absolute hurry here. I mean, we have to get something together if we want to go forward at town meeting in March. But we've got till late January, early February, you know, for that process, before that process locks in on us.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's not a lot of time as to holidays and whatnot. But slipping a few days, you know, it was the first week of December or the second week, somewhere in there, I think, would be okay. It'd be a Christmas present to the town, I suppose.
I think it's important that we do this, if you will, sooner. I don't want it to slip until second or third week of December. I think that is going to cause us considerable difficulty with the townsfolk. I do think that one thing we need to do is to find a way to socialize that we're having a public hearing on this more, more so than we have in the past, if you will. We've had public hearings before, and, you know, sometimes we get people showing up and other times we don't.
They may be.
In this case, it's going to be prudent for us to make sure that the public has ample opportunity to plan ahead so that they can be at this meeting, so that we're.
Right.
Ready, and that we as well are ready for that meeting.
Yep.
So it's, you know, we can't just rush into this unprepared ourselves.
Yeah, of course.
No, but I, but, so to get down to the practical questions, I mean, who is going to populate the website with what?
Exactly.
Right.
I mean, that's the key, because the sooner we get enough in there, you know, that's punched out, the sooner we can schedule our meeting, whether it's financial or technical background. I mean, you could think of several things.
We have a lot already.
We do.
A lot of content.
We could, we could start, but who is going to do that? I guess first we need to see what was developed, and then, you know, give the okay for that, and then is it someone, what we need is not a website developer per se, but someone who's going to maintain the website, right? And make sure it's up to date and constantly being populated with the right information, and someone who's monitoring it so that questions can be asked and answered. So maybe, maybe, John, you could tell us what your thoughts were? And you said you have sort of a proto-website.
Yes.
Ready to go? Yeah, I shared the, with the town secretary there earlier today, the link, so you could see it. It's not done, it's just started, but it's written. We need photography and to build out some new sections. In terms of maintaining it, this is, the site is based on what worked well in Concord, with some changes based on the project and this community, obviously. And if Steve needs the help, we have the ability, you know, to write the construction updates, push them out to the town mailing list, post them to social, and keep the site up to date, also maintain it. The site that we're proposing will be built in Squarespace, which is a very strong platform, affordable to create. But the nice thing about it, it's hard to have ransomware or any type of malware get into it. It's like a frozen environment, so it's very secure for a municipal website. It also has lots of functionality, easily updates itself, and again, can be easily made Americans with Disability Act compatible, so it's up to federal regulations as well. So it's a good platform to do something like this in, because the cost and all the benefits. Obviously, ease of use is a big part of that, too, right?
Exactly.
That's always been an issue. When we tell people to go to our town website, you know, sometimes you get the deer in the headlights look, headlights look at you, you know. I don't know how to do that, what to do once I get there. And that gets, that's more of an issue, perhaps, with our current website that we're, time that we're working on to make more user-friendly, more intuitive may be the better way of putting that. So, okay, so.
John, if we were to share the screen, would that be, could you give them a visual of the website?
Yeah, happy to. Again, it's not done, but I'm happy to walk them through it. Yeah, sure. All right.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting that's forward, so if it's that way, it's purely just conceptual. Does it make sense to have more than one public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, I think, and I think we will.
Because I think what's going to happen is, you know, we're going to have that group of people that just physically can't be here.
Exactly.
And feel like they.
Sure, and the time or the day. So, yeah, no, I think we're trying, I think the plan always was for more than one, but to get one in sometime this fall, and then work from there. Early next year before town meeting, yes. There'll be other competition, because we'll be in the, you know, we'll be in the middle of preparing for town meeting and budget hearings and bond hearings. So this will have to be put in that rotation, I think, as well. So, yeah. And then after that, of course.
Yeah.
And, of course, hiring.
Yes, project manager, yeah.
Oh, yes, well.
Town manager and project.
There, yeah, yeah, a couple.
So we've got a lot on the plate.
Couple of points we have to think about there, yeah.
So.
Anyway.
One thing, just, I've been requested a couple of times around town. People want to see the permit. They want to see, if you will, official documentation from outside of us supporting what we're doing. So information from, you know.
Yeah, it can be background.
PS.
Well, that can go on.
Information on the permit, the old permit, the new permit, the differences and so forth. These are key areas people are trying to understand.
Can those be linked pretty easily? I know they're pretty hefty documents.
No, they can be, and it's actually all.
They're all digital now.
It's all available on EPA's website. It's all public record, anyone can look at it.
Right, so we just need to collect it and put it on our website, basically. So all digitized.
Right.
Well, that's what I meant, this, this, this website and some sort of background or.
And to your point, maybe it's easier to have it be like a link.
A link, no, yeah.
I think our permit's like 300 pages.
Exactly, yeah.
We can host large documents on the site. If they're PDFs, that's no problem. People can download them. You know, or we could have it be read in a reader online, whatever works. But it's not hard. The only, you know, this is the prototype, but we can create like a, you know, documentation page and break it down by federal, state, local, however you want. And every time a document comes through, it can be uploaded, and people can easily search it. We can create a search mechanism, let them search the documents. We can, again, this is why I like Squarespace. It's got a lot of nice functionality. And these are all public documents, so there's no reason, it's just a matter of us collating them and putting them someplace where people can look at them if they so wish. And if they, you know, if they want to download it, that's fine, of course. If they want to print it, they can do that, too, if they want. I mean, all of that should be available for anybody on this site. So anyway.
Career function, too, at the top.
So I know you're going to be looking to hire people. You know, we've built a career page on this site as well to hire people to work at the wastewater treatment facility. But it can also be a project manager if the website goes up early and there's no project manager. That would be a nice add-on, that's for sure.
It's right at the top of the page, yeah.
Yeah, another avenue. Okay, so what do we just do at this point with regard to the web? I mean, that seems to be the key point. Let's get this up and running.
John tried to talk us through what he has.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, thank you. So if you could talk us through what you have so far and where we need to, what we need to get before this thing is operational? Well, it's not far off, right? I think we just need a little bit more text. I mean, we have to create a few new sections. But, okay, so this is, for example, this, the FAQ section, we wrote an FAQ, where you can easily click on it, right? And we can, again, this is not done, but very easy to read. You know, these are questions that came up in the discussion. So, you know, it's, 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 it's right there, and we can add a lot more questions with answers. You know, the about section is designed to, again, these are holding photos, so please forgive the photos. The about section is to talk about the project itself, and why we need to do it. And, you know, obviously, a little bit about Waterville Valley and links to the EPA, DES, and the town itself, you know? And then hitting our key points, building for the future, environmental stewardship. Again, you all have the link to see what this looks like. As a visitor, I'm looking at it from the back end of my design program. You know, and then talking about the costs, supporting the community. So, you know, the idea, this is stuff that we heard talking to people. This is the stuff that we heard, you know, talking with Dylan. And then, hold on, let me go back. The homepage is designed to get good search engine optimization, so it's easily found. All the navigation is up top. You can sign up for weekly updates right here. There's a banner where we could choose to talk about it at upcoming public meeting or the kickoff of construction. You know, there's a scroller here, so people know if there's going to be, when we get to that point, any disruptions for water or roads. Again, you know, a little nice little about what we're doing, what we believe in, why this project's going forward. Again, the place to say, have a blog where we can have construction updates, articles about the project itself, recaps of public hearings, and then the ability, this is just what one plant might look like, to subscribe for updates, construction newsletters, what have you, you know, a map. We could easily build a map to show where construction will be, where the new plant would be. Pretty easy thing, but here's the fun part. When I click on this, this is what it will look like on your phone, right? So it's really native to people's cell phones and works really well, because that's the great thing about Squarespace. So we designed the site to work on a computer, but also work on a cellphone, and the town staff would have full access to it. You know, if in the middle of the night Dylan had to make an update, we could give him access and teach him how to do that, and you could change something if there was, you know, an unforeseen issue. So site, as I said, it's not done, but I'd say it's about 70% of the way. We need photos. We also built out a nice area, talking about options for the ski area. Again, these photos are just placeholders, but, you know, talking about the difference between a septic system and connecting the ski area to the main system and what that would be like. So we're not there yet. What we'd like to do is get your feedback, what's missing, what doesn't make sense, what doesn't work. And with that, we'll go in with new photos, redevelop the site, finish it off, and then everybody can see another version, and then we'll make any changes to that. And then when it's done, we could either, we could put it where the current site is. I don't love that URL. It's a little confusing. I'd maybe like to get a new URL and then redirect the old one to the new site, because the other one, you know, reads WWTF, which I think it has a meaning for younger people and the kids, so I don't like that is the website. But we could certainly, you know, continue to have that one, redirecting into a new website. And we've talked about some options with Steve and Dylan, so there'd be a clean, fresh URL. And obviously. Um, so there'd be a clean, fresh URL and obviously have it well linked to the town page, uh, as well.
So do we have a link to this that we can access?
Yes, I, I, I shared it. Oops, I'm sorry. I shared it, um, today, uh, with, uh, the woman who set this meeting up. And I believe Steve and Dylan have it as well. I can, if I put it in the Zoom chat, would you have access to that? I could give, or, or that might be the best place.
Yeah.
Cause it's.
Yep, Steve will, will send it to us. So, um, what kind of timeline do you think we're looking at before we have a website up and running with most of what we want to say, but with still considerable things that need to be fleshed out and added?
I think if, if you gave us a list today of what you wanted and, and edits and feedback, we could get that done in a week, week and a half, no problem. You know, that's, we just built this kind of, you know, on, as a spec site to show you what it would look like. Cause I know it's hard to visualize, but as I said, it's mostly done. It's missing a few components. It's missing some text. But it's, it's pretty much what the site would look like. Once we get the photos, missing pieces and any input or corrections to the text. And then once it's launched, this is the front door for the project, right? All the information will flow through the site, any questions, any, you know, you could put videos. For example, if you've chose to, to video the, 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 the public meeting, we could run that video through the site and show it here as well. So basically it's a clearinghouse of information, documents, timelines. And so being completely transparent, sharing with the, the taxpayers, everything about this project so that nothing is left to the imagination.
And I imagine you can get some good, um, illustrations from Black and Beach to be able to help show what the actual treatment plants that we're looking at will look like and just, you know, what is an MBR, right, MBR?
And, and all that. Fantastic. You're right, because you don't want to leave anything to the imagination. People are spending a lot of money. They want to see what it's going to buy them. So having an artist conception of what the final treatment facility will look like, integrated, you know, into the Waterville landscape of the White Mountain National Forest. Yeah, I think that would be a very helpful add-on. We did that with the Main Street project. We, uh, created two really nice photo reel images of what the final project would look like and we got really good feedback. So thank you for bringing that up.
But besides just the artistry of it, I think it's important for people to understand just how much more complicated the system is. And that will help everyone understand why we need the extra personnel and the higher certifications and just throw all of that information that we can get from Black and Beach in there.
Can I make one point? I noticed as you were scrolling past on one of the pages, there was a comment about surpassing the EPA standards.
Yes.
Asked to fulfill. Surpassing is a word that would trigger individuals within the valley. And they will say, you're doing more than you need to because we're surpassing a requirement. Therefore, this is increasing the cost. Therefore, we don't want to pay for it.
So I think that's, that's a really good point.
This comes together. We have to be critically aware of individuals throughout the valley who will parse every single word in this and look for issues of that nature. So we need to be cautious about what we say on this website.
Yeah, no, I think you're absolutely right, Dan. Uh, we do have a very engaged, uh, town residents, uh, on, on, on every sort of issue. And certainly something of this magnitude, uh, we're going to have super engaged, a super engagement with, uh, with a lot of people. Um, so just to get to the time, I think the sort of thing you're talking about, Dan, that's something we can review.
Yes.
And then we can, you can, you know, raise points like that. What I like to do now, I think, is just establish when can we review what we have here? How much time, uh, does town staff need to incorporate whatever they can to get this thing launched? We do not have to have everything upfront. And if we make that plane somewhere at the beginning, that more, there's more to come, but this is what we have now. We should just get it out there. So, I mean, I heard, I heard, uh, Jim say, you know, we can have it a week, a week, launched a week, a week and a half. Then we'd be generous, say two weeks after you give us whatever it is you want.
Right.
Yeah.
Once we have photos, your input, you know, and what's missing and what needs to be changed, uh, you know, our designer, Michael Conway, uh, will, will work his magic and he's, he's fastidious. I mean, in a couple of afternoons, he could make changes structurally. He's very.
Well, all I would say to that point is that the, the images, that'll be the harder point. It's a good, it's a, it's an important component of it.
Right.
But that, as Wendy mentioned previously, that's where that thirty percent.
But that's what come in that report, right? And then, right.
Um, however, the majority of the basis of design, I can provide that to, uh, Lewis Carneau and they can, you know.
Stop plugging it in.
Absolutely. Because I mean, really, it's, it's more or less the, the, the timeline, without it being on a project schedule, if you will, of starting here.
Right.
Ending up.
Right.
More or less just weeding through the, the alternatives to get down to the process that we selected and why. And even having this, this website have phases, I think is, it is important. Because as you mentioned, Dan, there's going to be people that are going to be so nitpick, nit, nitpicky, um, with the particulars of it that even the terminology that we, we utilize needs to be, you know, on point.
Right.
Making sure that it, it's appealing to the masses and not, not taken out of context. So. Um, I, I don't think it'd be hard to do, to get them at something in a, in a week.
Right, so when do we want to give them our, when we want to give, uh, Lewis Carneau our input so they can incorporate that in? When's a good time for you guys to review what they have now? And we would obviously, I think, want to meet to discuss it. If we have, uh, changes we want to make to language and talk about it. So, um, what works? Yeah, Steve.
Jim, what would be the best manner for, so if we have multiple people trying to look at this website, suggest edits, how, how do we get those edits off to you? Is that through a shared folder or what would you prefer?
Or a shared document? I think that's really, that's a great question, because if you have three people offering different edits on the same text.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. I think, yeah. All they add.
I, I could circulate the, you know, the source Word document that this was based on, that but some changes were made as it was laid out. I could start with that. Or you could just say page one, you know? Uh, we don't want to say upgrade. We want to say build or invest. So, you know, and then maybe that person passes that on to the next person who then adds the notes, but they see what the person before them said. And then we could take all those notes and then do a rework of the site. At which point we'll have the, the photos back from, we hired Jeff Forrester, very affordable, excellent photo editor at the Concord Monitor, just retired. So he's going to come up and shoot and he's one of those guys, doesn't need a lot of direction. He just, he just goes and gets the story because he's a photo journalist. So we'll have really good, big photos to make this site look nice. Um, and then, you know, it's a question of, you know, do we want to change the, the, the top to talk about the public information meeting? You know, and the good thing is this site, once it's built, it can be changed and it could be enlarged or shrunk. It's Squarespace, so it's very flexible. It's not an HTML-based site. It's a site that's based on templates. So we can make all kinds of easy changes without spending hardly any money if need be, and add sections and, and remove sections. So that's the great thing. And after it's done, you own this site, right? So if you want the site to continue to be about the wastewater treatment plant or facility, rather, as a recruitment site or as a reporting site, you own it, it's yours and it's very easily updated.
So you said this, there's a Word document, Jim, that exists that we could make edits.
Yes, that, that the designer used to fill in the, um, the, the sections.
The text of this. I think that and the actual, um, draft you have now up on the screen, uh, you know, I don't think we need to get separately our comments. I think we just meet and we, we provide, we provide Lewis Carneau with our consolidated comments that we need to agree among ourselves.
Yes.
Uh. I could sit there with the Word document.
We can do it. We can just schedule a meeting, a workshop. We just have to set aside a morning.
Yep.
To make sure we roll through it all, uh, after we have time to review it at home and then just do it.
Yeah.
And then get it, get it, get it to, uh, uh, the folks at Lewis Carneau and, and let them do their thing, add the pictures. And then I think we'd want to pass on the final product, or at least the initial final product, uh, before we actually, uh, actually go live with it.
Yeah.
Been having, uh, Steve and I had discussed, discussed this briefly previously, but even, uh, the WeekWag is going to be writing an article. Even having a place for things that will be on this website. So that way people can see, you know, local.
Yeah.
Local input and see that.
Sure.
You know, this isn't just created by the town. This is outsiders' user.
Sure, public comment, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I, we can think of other several areas, I mean, uh, as well. Um, the septic versus sewer thing is going to be big for the town. Uh, decommissioning the lagoons.
Yeah.
All of that, I think it's going to have to be a separate section as well. That, you will change. The, the energy of that are going to change as we get around to concentrating on that more as we move through the process. But that's okay. That's, that's the process.
With like phasing the website of, it's almost like.
Right.
You know, we, we're in design phase currently. Once you move into construction, the website is probably going to be entirely a different format in that sense.
Right, because people's. Concentrating on the.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Right. Okay.
Jim, just one question, technology wise. This is, the platform you said is called Squarespace?
Squarespace, correct. If you go to Squarespace.com, you can see the opening page for the, for the company.
Is it, does it have any ability to push notifications out to social media platforms?
Yes, it does. So you could, for example, you see the blogs here. These are, these, you could write a blog. Well, Wigrag discusses wastewater treatment facility and you write a blog about their article. You can't really run their article because it might be copyrighted and we don't want to infringe on their copyright. But once it goes live, it can go to social and it, you could program it to do that. And it can also go out to a newsletter list. Uh, we can easily, Squarespace has a free newsletter management piece in it. So every time a blog runs, it can go to social, it can go out to subscribers. Um, so it's got that nice feature. It saves a lot of time. But what I would do to help you, my colleague Carlota would be the point person and she would run the blog and work with you and Steve and Dylan to make sure, I say blog because it's a blog site, um, that everything is updated and working. And if she could send the newsletter out for you, make sure that it's all happening behind the scenes. We do that for several other clients, like the New Hampshire Center, uh, for Justice and Equity and the New Hampshire Health Cost Initiative. We run their websites for them affordably.
And the other, I guess, other question I have from a tech piece, Jim, is does the website have the ability for us to re, or to pre-input email addresses that we would want?
We can import. If you send us a list in Excel, we can import it in with a few clicks, yes.
With users having the ability to opt out if they're not interested?
Yes, uh, everybody who receives a newsletter will have the ability to opt out. That is, um, considered, you know, standard operating procedure in newsletters, correct?
Thank you.
And, and it's nice because it's all part of the Squarespace package. We can even do commerce through here. If somebody wanted to buy a wastewater treatment facility hat, you know, they could buy if you wanted to do that. There's all kinds of, it's like your phone. They're always bringing in new things.
But.
Oh.
Every little bit helps, right?
That's math.
Make a donation.
So, uh, uh, I think, uh, Dylan, you mentioned, uh, it's possible a week or so, maybe a little longer. The board, when, when we have, we'll get these two, uh, items. The draft website and the Word document it's based on that we can review and then let's schedule a meeting. So what does your schedule look like, folks?
We have a meeting on the twenty second already and a meeting on the twenty third already scheduled, correct?
Yes.
Do you have any other meetings?
Um.
We talked about a pre-meeting before the meeting on the twenty third.
Well, that's today, isn't it?
Yeah, no, that was a different.
No, no, that was, that was today.
We're doing that today?
Yeah, it was, it was this, in non-public.
In non-public, okay.
So, um, yep, I have those. I have those. That's all I've got is those, uh, two meetings. I think there should be just a separate meeting, right? Cause we're going to sit and do some wordsmithing.
Well, can we shoot for the twenty eighth or twenty ninth? Is that, is it Tuesday, Wednesday? Would that give everyone enough time?
To review it?
And, and to update or, you know, whatever. Cause you guys have to put stuff in, right? Or submit stuff to Jim and then it would get put in.
And my schedule is yours, so, meaning I don't have anything on my schedule. So I'm not the limiting factor.
The twenty ninth would work of the two days, the twenty ninth will work best for me. We probably want to do it in the morning, just to see, cause we don't know how long it may take, something like nine, nine o'clock on the twenty ninth. Come armed with all the comments we want to make on the drafts we have in front of us and then just hammer it out. That work for everybody?
Now, just to be clear, um, Dylan and Steve, you'll be looking through and sending anything additional that you have. And then Jim, you'll be able to incorporate those things in, in.
Definitely quiet commentary, right? No, I mean, it's all technical stuff, the, any, all that stuff.
I don't know.
I would, I think too, that's a good point, Wendy. And what I would say to that is I will send them anything, almost basically everything that I have that is relevant. And anything that they have any questions on of how it, how it should or could be incorporated, they can run that by me.
Good.
I can give that to them. And then once the website is in a draft form, if you will, then the board can review it. And then we can make modifications as we go from there if that works for.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So does that give enough time for you, Jim, the twenty ninth with everything?
Yeah, I, I will get my people standing by and ready. The only little thing that we need to do is up, we've discussed like new URLs, new web addresses. Um, when we go to register that, we need to do it with you or someone from the town. Cause we want the URL to be registered to the town of Waterville Valley, be on your email and on your credit card. So when it goes to renew in four or five years, you know, we may not be around, right? But it goes to whoever is working at the town then, and it's a seamless thing. That way you don't lose the site, because I've seen that happen too many times. The developer registers the site. You know, the developer goes out of business or moves away and then, you know, the, the client has no access to the URL. So we never do it that way. We always, it's your URL, it's your site.
So two questions about that, Jim. The first is, we still maintain our old platform?
Yes.
Um, through WordPress? Do we see any interest in keeping that website afloat for any longer? Its renewal period is up.
Yeah, I would keep it running until the new one comes along, because you don't want there to be a gap. As soon as the news website is up and running, we can go into that WordPress, wherever it's, it could be, you know, GoDaddy, wherever the URL is housed and redirect it to the new site. We don't want competing sites. That's bad. And we don't want no site. That's bad. What we do want is one consistent site. So that would be my suggestion.
The, the information on that site, Jim, is severely outdated and there's little, no traffic on it right now. The only reason I, I ask you is, do you feel as though your team has pulled the data and the information off that site that you feel is relevant already?
And if that's. Scraped off everything we could take off of it that was still relevant, plus the stuff based on our many discussions, so, and our research.
That's just, I think we could just can it.
Yeah.
Cause the. Alright, so if you can it, then this will be a brand new site. So we just would need, who wants to be the person we'll work with to buy the URL and put it in your name and on your credit card so you always own it? But we can talk about that next week.
Yeah, it would be Steve, I think. I would like, Jim, could you give the board, uh, just a quick synopsis? I thought, I think we drilled down to one, maybe two URL.
Yeah, we had a couple. Um, I will, I will dig him, dig him out and resend them, uh, when I send the, the source document. Uh, so you could take a look. But we haven't bought anything yet, so this is a chance to have a discussion. And number one rule is keep it simple, right? Less is always more. And don't forget the way that most people find websites is through a Google search. So, um, having good search engine optimization is really important. This site has been written with search engine optimization in mind. And the old site didn't have bad station either. It's not a bad site. Um, you know, it's just out of date.
Right.
Yeah, so we can shoot for getting, uh, this new site up and running early November, maybe the first week, week and a half of November, and that'll give us people two, three weeks potentially.
Yeah.
Right.
To, to review and, and for us to continue to put stuff in there, including anything that comes out of our discussion with BMV on the thirty percent, thirty percent BOD.
I, I believe one of them was, uh, WWT Clean Water or Waterville.
Yeah, it was like Clean Water, you're right, Dylan.
Uh, and again, I, the idea behind it was just to try to keep it relatively short, because even our last one was like Waterville Valley, WWTF.org, which is long.
Right, no, you want somebody to type in two, three letters and boom, it, it's going to populate, especially if they've been there before.
Right.
Right.
And if you keep the site running, right, and it says clean water, then it, it's, it's forward facing. It could be the website for the, the wastewater treatment facility for ten years. And talking about this facility, jobs, you know, what have you.
Commissioning. Right.
Right. Now, where where actually the site reside, would this be in the cloud? It will be on Squarespace's protected servers. Okay, so and their servers, I assume they're virtual servers? They are and they're, you can't put any code into them, you can only use templates, that's the problem with WordPress. In WordPress, you can upload code and that code can have malware in it. Squarespace isn't allowed any code uploaded to it. So as long as you keep your password well maintained, your site is bulletproof. And that's why we like it, easy to use, not expensive, it's a couple hundred bucks a year to subscribe. Um, and it's very secure. All right, so well. Don't take my word, check it out on your own. No, no, thank you for all of that. So, uh, we will meet, uh, we will get the source document and, uh, we already have, but you'll send the link to. The proto- prototype they have of the website.
Hmm.
We'll plan our meeting at nine o'clock on the twenty ninth. The five of us. Uh, I've got it from nine to noon.
Okay.
Just to see if he can't roll through it all, so that'll give us. Uh, you know, what, a week and a half to review it among our, you know. Alone and then come together.
Hmm.
Um, I think we have a plan of action, is that all good for everybody?
Sounds good.
And then if we have, you know, suggestions too, and not just wordsmithed, but things we think ought to be part of the website.
Yeah.
Would be helpful too, and then maybe we can get this thing up and running. Let's say by mid, mid-November. That that sounds like a reasonable thing.
That's ideal.
Was there any other, uh, any other issues, uh? Topics we wanna discuss with, uh?
Jim?
Jim or, uh? Or did you have anything for us? Beyond, uh? I think we'll stay in contact as we move ahead, we'll partner with you where you need us and we'll. You know, work so that the site is updated and maintained up to town meeting and then. The project's approved beyond that with the construction and and work, so it's a, it's a good solid site to keep people informed. Um, yeah, we're happy to do that and I think it's, um, you know, it's a good communications investment in terms. And you're comfortable, uh, now, as you said, unfortunately, uh, tragically, market isn't in the picture, but you're comfortable with the. With the glimes of communication with us from you to. Oh, yeah, Dylan and Steve have been great, um, and I know. Goes the way they are then, alright, do you have something, Dan?
I I do. Um, notionally, we'll have a. A, what, public hearing in early December sometime?
That would seem to be.
So.
A good benchmark.
Will. You be helping us prepare? All of the materials that are needed?
Yes. That, mm-hmm. We can, if you need us, we've got a designer who's really good and very affordable. You know, we we've worked on the messaging because we had all those public listening sessions. We can help so there's consistency of message, clarity of message, simplicity of message. So then when you make a presentation, you know, the folks watching, you know, get it, there's no confusion. You know, but that's a two-way process, just as you said, you know, that that word, you know, surpass doesn't work. You know, we'll be able to suggest things and you'll also want to put your imprint on, so we're here to partner with you. Great, I I think that was always one of the key things we were looking for was. Helping us put together or putting together a presentation.
Yeah, right.
For that meeting, um, yes.
But I wanted to mention that before we go because I think the one time is short and it takes away all the good materials. To be honest with you.
That's good. Okay.
Good.
Are we good then? Anyone have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks so much. See you all again, take care, we'll stay in touch. I'll get you all the documents, first thing, tomorrow. Alrighty, great, thank you, great work, thank you. Alright, uh, do we have anything else for non-public? I I assume we're just done with this discussion for now, or they're gonna comment on this? Any other non, any other, uh? Business before we go into non-public?
I have here printed the water and sewer, the quarter three warrant for your signature.
Okay.
Along with some backup materials, kind of giving you an idea of. Uh, quarter over quarter, year over year analysis. One change that, you know, Kristen and I would like to make is. I I think historically, this document here, you are accustomed to signing on the bottom.
Right.
We'd prefer that you actually sign the actual warrant. Jim, this is the the warrant that comes out of our tax, um, our tax system. And a good cross-check is, if you'd like to look at the total amount of the warrant. That is also. Indicated on this breakdown that you've been previously provided. So I just like a quick control, if you just wanna check to make sure that the number that's on this document matched to what's on the warrant.
Okay.
Would be, I think, is a best practice.
Okay.
So just, so that you're saying the amount is on the warrant?
Yep.
So this is the third quarter.
Yeah.
Total. Warrant amount.
It's the third quarter.
Third quarter water and sewer.
Water and sewer and trash bills. And, uh, it's already ready, almost ready to go, pretty much at the post office. But we need to talk about a couple inserts.
Couple of inserts, yeah, so we have. Uh, Dylan can speak to his, uh, service, water service line.
I'm sorry, did you have a question on this first one?
No, just.
Want to read that first? Alright, give us thirty seconds to. Review this. Is this going to go out in conjunction with? Under separate cover, I imagine, uh, the letters we are gonna send for delinquent accounts?
That's separate.
Those will be separate.
That'd be sep- under separate cover?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And no really major fluctuations quarter over quarter, quarter to highlight?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think, what was it, Dylan, about a million gallons over?
Yeah.
Two, three last year, but you'll see. Year over year fluctuations being pretty similar, gonna go a year up, a year, a million up, a million down, a million up, a million down, it's.
One thing that I would point out that you will not notice is that in previous years prior to twenty three, I believe. You're gonna see some large variation and a lot of that had to do with we changed our billing software.
Yeah.
More, uh, modern software. Uh, previously was basically run off of like a laptop that was utilizing, I believe, uh, Windows. Winning XP was the predecessor of XP. Uh, and anyway, more or less what I'm getting at is, uh, it's a lot more, we certainly have more input accuracy with our existing. Uh.
Right.
Versus previous, so it's certain.
Though a seeming difference is really an artifact of the software change.
In 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 flow, in terms of.
Right, okay.
Water daily and monthly flow, I mean, you know, looking at it percentage wise, um. Yeah, that had been an issue in years past, if I, you know. Uh, the the collection amount is in terms of dollar figures, what we're really looking at, so. Um, I think the collections, Steve, was more or less a thousand or something less than last year, water and sewer, does that sound accurate? Q three seventy four, Q three twenty five, I think we projected about a hundred and thirty. But possibly, such a lot of volume to have.
Twenty, twenty-four to twenty-five?
Yeah.
Um. We saw water usage in Q three twenty-five at eight point, almost eight point seven million?
Uh, just a dollar amount, I'm sorry.
Dollar amount with a minor fluctuations, yes, fifteen hundred between the two.
There you go.
Yep.
Is this something, as an aside, and I'm asking it not for. A definitive answer now, but is this something that a business AI program? Would be very helpful and, um, in parsing out what it is. From on, in terms of trends or what we're, what we're looking at? You'd ask it the appropriate questions like, uh, with regard to water usage over, you know, a. Five-year period, you know, uh, can you give us the trend, can you give us the average, can you give us the average per quarter, you know, whatever?
Yeah, it's funny you mention that, I've done that with this data, I've asked. AI to provide some trend analysis around it on a couple of occasions. And I'd like to refine it because it does give you a lot, but one thing that it does point out. Pretty quickly is, oh, it appears you are a resort, um, style community with seasonal fluctuation.
That's scary.
But, yeah, I was looking, this time when I did it.
Right.
I was looking for anything that really popped, like.
Right.
Like an alarm kind of a thing.
Right.
Um, so that's why I didn't bring it forward, because I didn't see anything that was concerning, um, but I'd be happy to provide. What analysis it does, it does give us and, but it, a lot of it was very generic.
What were you using, uh, for that? What AI were you using?
This one was Chat G P T.
Just the, uh, non-business version?
The free version.
Just the free version?
The only thing I would add to that is that.
Not to put you out of a job, Dylan, but. I would think it'd be another tool for data analysis.
No, sure, the only thing I would say is that because you have so many variables that lead to how our usage is. Or generated, if you will, that. Unless we had an AI that was capable of understanding. We would have to probably put into it, like when we get the, um, occupancy reports from the resort, something that could take all of that into an account.
Yeah.
All, uh, and and somehow formula, formula, formulate a, uh, or create a formula, if you will, to like. Give you what, what you should expect versus what real numbers are. That's the only way that I could see it.
Right.
And in my, my, my understanding with the business style licenses, it, it, it does retain more memory.
Yeah, that's the whole point, right, that as you go on and it will, it'll, it will learn.
It'll learn your town, yeah, it'll learn your business, exactly.
We may have something of that, of that capability with the facility. That is some.
You would think it would be built in, you would think it would be built in, right?
Into the SC system.
Right.
Um. So, but certainly, I'm open to it, I'm not.
Because the, just the free version of Chat.
G chat.
A chat.
Yeah.
G P T, right, was able to identify us as a. Resort community.
Hmm.
And I gotta think that there are. AI algorithms out there that immediately this thing would look at for resort communities.
Right.
And we're not recreating. The wheel here at all, so I think we really should look at this, uh. Again, not a definitive answer, we're talking about some, but I I think. Um. Twenty-second maybe at our next meeting, do we feel?
What problem are you trying to solve?
No, adding a business, a business, uh, AI, uh, function. Uh, a license basically to be able to do these sorts of analyses. For us.
To save time ultimately.
It saves time, but you know, there are gonna be insights.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that will be very, very helpful as well, I think, and there's all sorts of. All sorts of questions one could ask these things to research.
I'm gonna say something, I'm like, I could put my pride to the ignorant, so pardon it, pardon me if I do. Well, the only thing that I can foresee, and I'm sure someone that is a integrator could probably educate me on this. Is the extraction of data off of our computers and log or the meters, if you will, that log the data. Exporting that into an AI that's going to take that information.
And work with it, right.
Absolutely, that's the only thing, and again, I'm certainly not, you know, integrator, so I'm not sure exactly how that works out. I'm sure it's not the hardest thing by any stretch. I'm sure it could some, maybe even be an Excel spreadsheet that is just taking the numbers. And withdrawing that information and putting it somewhere else. Um, and I think what Dan's getting at though is, you know, what is the. What are you taking that information and what is that information being driven toward? Or in other words, you know, if we had that information, what are we, what are we going to do with it?
Yeah, I mean, it just.
With the little use that I've experienced around, it's just so fast, it's almost as though. You know, if you're not getting. Productive results, yes, you could spend more time and see how you could rework the question or rework the the information that you're giving it. But I don't see it as, you know, a hindrance whatsoever.
I'm concerned with the accuracy of some of the current AI algorithms and such.
It would, it would definitely take some research to make sure.
I, yeah.
Yeah. Not necessarily comfortable. With just assuming that they're giving us correct information.
Well, there are several competing AIs out there and it is being integrated into, into many businesses. As well, I mean, this, and I don't think the licenses are, are expensive. Uh, as these things go. And, uh, yeah, we would have to approach it with a little bit of skepticism as first until we're comfortable. With what, what we're doing.
Yeah, trial, more or less, look at it from a standpoint, to try and see if it's worthwhile and if it's not, then move on.
Move on or try another algorithm, an AI algorithm that that seems, but.
This is Steve's point, I might have very, very limited interaction with, using any AI, but it's more or less how you prompt it.
Sure.
It's really, it could, you could ask it the same question fifteen different ways and it's gonna give you a different answer.
Right.
So.
No, it depends what you're looking for.
Yeah.
You know, what you wanted to hone in on, but, so you're thinking to do some research and give us an idea of what kind of. What's out there and what costs for like a business, with a business license?
Yep.
Would cost us. Again, my understanding is it's, it's quite cheap now because they're competing.
Yeah.
There, there are four or five really big operators out there. Building these things like crazy and. Trying to get the leg up on everybody else, whether it's Google or.
But therein lies the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, but again, we can, the whole idea behind it is to have a human mind break.
The algorithms will deceive you. At times, and they can do that. Um.
I don't know.
You know, there is just, I just read today. A lawyer was fined by a judge because the briefs had. They'd used AI to create them and they artificially created case references.
Yeah.
That did not exist.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, K P M G, just.
Mm-hmm.
And Australia lost.
Company, yeah.
Uh, what was it, four hundred million dollars, I think, they had to pay. Um, Australia, because they're, they use now where they can create reports. And it faked the data. So. You. I understand people are using AI algorithms. Um. And I understand they can be put to good use, but I also understand there, they can also lead us astray. And in a town like ours, where we're gonna have everybody. Um, basically parsing every word.
Mm-hmm.
That they see, we run the risk once something goes wrong. If, if we put out misinformation inadvertently because an AI algorithm steers us in the wrong direction. I think we've really done ourselves and the town a disservice, and so I am. I am leery at best.
Well, fair point.
Concerned at most.
Fair point, but I think that, you know, we are the break, town staff and the select board are the break. Uh, in that process, I don't think we just regurgitate out what a, what an AI analysis may, may give us. And frankly, we're victim to that anybody, whether it's. A firm that's doing analysis for us or not, if they get something wrong, we don't catch it.
Sure.
That happens.
Right.
So, again, let's see what the cost is, I mean, that's, that's kind of a, a big job, if it's minimal, I don't see why we don't. Experiment with this at a minimum and see if it can be helpful.
Are you okay if I wrap that into our budget discussion, or would you like to see something sooner?
Um, I guess it'll depend on the cost.
Um, if I see something startling to let you know?
Yeah, I mean, if we're just, if we're talking not a lot of money, I assume it's a, a monthly license.
Yep.
You buy into it.
Or software line?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just see what it is, I mean, let's, let's start getting familiar, uh, with this, I mean, we, we dipped our toe. In the water with, uh, using AI for minutes and that took some playing around with, so Dan, you're absolutely correct, but. Um, there is also an AI out there that's reporting on all these meetings.
Yeah.
Which hasn't, has been pretty good, I'll have to say.
It's gotten better.
It's gotten better because that's, it's.
That's what they do.
It's learning and the, I think the person. Reviewing them, the human eye on it is better understanding what it is, we're actually talking about it at a given point in time too. So.
Okay.
So, but you had a, I'm sorry, I, I took us way off here, but you wanted to talk about a couple inserts too.
Yeah, Dylan, would you mind briefing them on the? Yeah, Dylan, would you mind briefing them on the water service line customer notice?
So this, this notice going out that there's a weekly notice from last year. This, this came about from the previous administration with the get the let out initiative that they.
Right, I remember that.
Yeah, it's basically because, this has been a town decision. For the sake of this discussion, the town has taken the stance, we know we don't have any issues with lead in our service line. We do lead copper testing every year. Previous years, we had done even additional lead copper testing. We don't have any lead issues around town. Rich, you live under the, the older construction side of town. We use utilize your house, utilize their waste hours, all threes, those are some of the oldest houses in town. You don't have any lead issues. And why I'm saying it before I go to the next phase is because this more or less is the town's decision is to not dig up every single service line in town to inspect them, to verify that we don't have an issue.
Right. Having to look at every single connection and see what the solder was on it.
And that is allowed?
So that is, my understanding is there isn't a penalty
Okay.
That goes along with this. Yeah, there's a ten-year compliance window.
Right.
So we're only in year two. So my, I think the town's stance was we wanted to see how this played out at the federal level before we jumped.
Yeah.
Because there's one towns that have already spent millions and millions of dollars doing what they call potholing, which basically is just digging a, a, a straight test pit down into the ground, and now they have to repave all of their roads.
Right, this was a completely unfunded mandate, you know, shoved down from the Fed, shoved down states and the state just kept it going downhill to the localities to deal with this.
Yeah, so in this, for people that use, if they may listen, this is not indicative that there is an issue. This is just what the federal government requires us to do because we can't guarantee the composition of your service line, or what the material is. As, as I mentioned though, we do do a substantial amount of lead and copper testing and we, we do not have any issues that have been of any, any particular concern. There's going to be some houses here and there that have lead fixtures in the house. That's one thing, but when you look at our, our water distribution system, it's all either ductile iron or cast iron. It's not like, you know, the old, old days where they were using a lead pipe coming off because it was the easiest thing to manipulate or valuable, so they, they utilize that. But anyway, that, that's all this is. It had, it's a little bit updated from the previous year. It has a lot of QR codes on it, so people as they get them can just use the QR code and we'll give them additional information if they're curious. And as, again, as it's pointed out on the bottom of this, if there's any concerns, they can reach out to me and I'll answer any questions or concerns that they have.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Are we asking them, people are not going to be required to do this?
Can you elaborate more on what you mean?
Well, which is, we say, we start off with a very interesting clause, because of new federal requirements for lead in drinking water. We are notifying you that you do not, we do not have a record of the piping materials of your water service line. Please follow instructions below to identify and report the piping materials of your water service line so that we may complete our water system inventory records.
So to your point, we are not, the town is not doing that portion of it, and that is the town's responsibility to do that. It's not the private citizen.
Right.
However, people that I've had a concern, what I've had them do is reach out to me with pictures of their service line and their base meter, water meter. And I can tell them, if I can't, if I can't see a picture of it and identify it, I will go to their house look at it and be able to tell. We haven't had anybody yet that's had anything but copper or plastic in the entire town. Including houses up on Stones Mountain Road. So there hasn't been any, anything that's been of issue. I think, I think where we have other issues is some of our water, our water regs and how much ambiguity there is and the love, where the town owns to, because there's three different parameters that control that. In this, in this I don't know what you would call this, this image, I suppose, that kind of shows a water, you know, public own versus private. They make it seem as if it's cut and dry.
Right. Up to here is yours and the rest is the town's.
And it varies from property to property in Whiteville Valley. So.
Right.
Again, that, the town stance, and I, I, I'm not afraid to tell people that when they ask that this is a, you know, it's cost prohibitive for something that is not going to, you know, in reality, change the the quality of your water that's, that's being produced and being fed to your residents or property. So if we get to a different standpoint, if we get into this, I mean, I think that's going to be the board's decision to make as we, this persists. If we get to a point where it looks like nothing is going to change and we have, we are forced to comply with this, then I think that's a different discussion rather than what we're having now. I think just feeling this out, again, we're only in year two of this, and the state still has no clue what's going on with this. They, they had to assign municipalities with consultants. Yeah, EPA funded, so EPA funded consultants being assigned to municipalities, but no money to comply with the actual infrastructure side of it. So, you know, there's kind of an imbalance there of, it's, you know, we'll help you come up with a plan to do this, but no money to actually implement the plan. So, again.
All right. Fine with it?
Yeah.
Fine with it, okay. And there was another?
Another notice here that the Conservation Commission has put together to, the intent is to cut these in thirds. And so just to have one little insert, and the insert talks about how to protect our waters through the use of salt conservation. And.
There you go. So, right, so this would be three letters, right?
Yep. I thought the one coffee can per driveway. Suggestion.
Coffee mug.
Coffee mug.
Of salt is enough for a standard driveway?
I think this opens up a huge can of worms.
I don't know.
The first thing the town's gonna do is you're gonna have people whining about the town using salt on our roads.
Well, Megan's been.
Not whining.
No, but Megan's been very forthright that she's looking into alternatives, and that's been an ongoing discussion for a couple of years now, not longer.
Longer, yeah.
So I think this is just asking individuals to do their parts from the Conservation Commission. We're kind of just passing it along. I don't see anything offensive in it. It's educational.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the, the can of worms.
I just think you put the thought in their mind that says, oh, we can't use salt. Oh, my God, the town's using salt.
Yeah, no, we've already, we've already had that. We get that every year.
And you're gonna have it every, every time you stick these notices in there.
And we will, we will explain as we always do uh, that we, you know, need to salt our roads and some of the other material available to us is very, very expensive and that
Prohibitive.
Right, and that Megan Department of Public Work has, has changed. We've added sand to the process and to order the lesson, lessen the salt, but
Yep.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
I mean, I'm okay with it, actually. We'll, we'll, we always get questions this time of year on this.
Yep.
From the Conservation Commission in particular. Okay, do we, so we're gonna go, go ahead with it? Yeah.
Both are okay to include?
I guess, yeah.
Okay. Tony, Cat, I know you're listening. Thanks for your help in these inserted.
Anything?
I could just add a thing to that, Rich.
So.
Yeah. And the reason why we're mailing those out is those have a mailing date for the water service line, material notice. Those have a mailing date requirement of December one, instead of spending more money on postage.
Yeah. Right, no, yeah.
Yeah, a run just for context is about nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for a full resident run of any type.
And it's really the only mailer, mass mailer we have other than tax, but we can't include anything in the, in the tax. That's strictly.
Or it'd be too late.
Right.
Yeah.
Just, I do have a simple question. On the first part of this, we are not keeping records of the houses and their service lines to the streets, if you will, are we? Or aren't we?
New construction, we, we are. We do not have any records of, of anything basically pre two thousand nine.
Okay, okay. We are.
Going forward.
Moving forward. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, anything else before we go into non-public?
Nope.
Alrighty, may I have a motion to go into non-public for legal matters?
I moved.
Second, all in favor? Christian, just let us know when we're off. Our name is opportunity.
Stretch my legs. Chris, can you let Tony? No. Good to go. Thank you.
And yeah, definitely double the thanks.